Imminetate size, n'elhi ha'satur in Guam is called to order. But as colleagues, we will begin with a prayer and I call upon Senator Titegui to lead us in prayer.
Kininata la hina espiritus santu, amen. Lord, we come before you humbled by the privilege of serving our families and the community of Guam. We come before you imperfect, but determined as a public servant to use our experiences, talents, energy, and limited time here to help create a more hopeful future for all who call Guam home. Lord, we seek your guidance, your protection, and your support in the work we do in behalf of our community, in the conversations and deliberations we engage in, and the decisions we make on policies that will impact this future, future generations. Lord, may our work here in this hall help to improve the lives of all Guamanians, especially the sick or manamku, those challenged with financial and economic hardship, and the abandoned, forgotten, and ignored. We pray for those whose physical, emotional, and financial health have been impacted by COVID. We pray that they will find healing, comfort, and true peace. Lord, we pray for our colleague Senator Joe San Augustine and for his family and friends and all who are mourning the loss of the late Speaker Joe T., whose life and service as public servant educator and political leader are immeasurable. Together and with all unshakable faith and trust in you, we conclude our petition with a serenity prayer. God, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Kininata la hina espiritus santu, amen.
To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of imaladun mastakiluna sacrifisju on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient imaladun mastakiluna sacrifisju, I recognize Senator Joe San Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Cook Second Class WWII Philomenio Santos and the family of Cook Second Class Philomenio Santos for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
For the interfessi, I recognize Senator Blas. Please lead us in interfessi. For the singing of the Guam hymn, could Senator Jose Pedro Terlahe please lead us? And in the singing of the National Anthem, could Senator Ada please lead us?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Please turn me, colleague.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous far? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, please take the roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Moylan. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Nelson. Senator Perez. Senator Rogel. Senator San Augustine. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegui. Senator Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senator Nelson, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sítus mossi, Madam Speaker. I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated March 19, 2021, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve the Legislative Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imaga Hagan Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion that messages from Imaga Hagan Guam be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced, Bill numbers 86-36COR through 90-36COR, 91-36LS through 99-36LS, and 100-36COR through 126-36COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolutions Number 42-36COR and 43-36COR, 44-36LS through 50-36LS, and 51-36COR through 63-36COR, to be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
I move to excuse Senators not present for today's legislative session.
On the motion to excuse Senators who are not present for today's session, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all Senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. We are still in motion. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sítus mossi, Madam Speaker. I would like to make the motion to place Bill 86-36 and Bill 94-36 at the top of the agenda as was indicated by the core meeting. So I notice in the agenda it's listed in numerical order.
Senator, could you please repeat your motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to place Bill 86-36COR and also Bill 94-36COR, I'm sorry, at the top of the agenda.
Bills 86 and 94?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. On the motion to move these bills that are already on second reading to the top of the second reading folder, Bill Number 86-36 and Bill Number 94-36, on that motion, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still in motions? Seeing no other motions, Majority Leader, or... You are recognized? No, so we will... All right, we're on... There are no other motions, so we go to legislative concurrence. We'll recognize for the nominations Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I move to place the nominee of Monaco de Oro to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion for the nomination of Monaca de Oro to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors, is there any objection to placing that nomination on the voting file? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government, Operation, Appropriation, Housing, the nomination of Carl E. Corpus to serve as a member, resident of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that nomination, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning the nomination of David R. Duñez to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government, Operation, Appropriation, Housing, the nomination of Daphne M. Leonguero to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place that nomination in the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens the nomination of Dr. Janice P. Malile to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture the nomination of Dr. Gregory J. Miller to serve as a member, the Chiropractic Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture the nomination of Ray C. Tahazi to serve as a member, Physician Assistant Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. There is no item under consent calendar, so we are now on the second reading file. I'm going to recognize Senator Sabina Perez.
Thank you, Madam.
We are on Bill Number 86-36COR.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 86-36COR in the third reading file. It's introduced by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend Section 51A 106A2 and to add a new Section 51A 106A3, both of Chapter 51A, Title 10 Guam Code annotated relative to expanding the qualification requirements for Guam Solid Waste Authority General Manager position, and I would like to discuss.
All right. Senator Perez, please proceed, but please if you could just speak just a little bit closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. So Bill 86-36, sponsored by myself, aims to create a larger pool of qualified candidates in order to find succeeding general managers for the Guam Solid Waste Authority and was developed at the request of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board. Since August 2020, GSWA Board of Directors has been searching for a general manager, and within those eight months, the board has received several interested applications for the position, but with educational qualifications that are not specifically listed in the current statute. For context, the current statute states that the general manager must meet two criteria. One, a combined minimum of six years of documented experience successfully managing a solid waste management system of similar size as Guam Solid Waste Authority system. And two, graduation from an accredited institution of higher education with a bachelor's degree in business management, engineering management, engineering technology, or civil engineering. Bill 86-36 proposes to expand the educational requirement to environmental science, environmental engineering, or a closely related field or discipline. Additionally, specialized training in waste management could also be considered to support the termination of necessary educational expertise in combination with a prerequisite management experience of a minimum of six years. The selection of the current qualified general manager by GSWA Board was a key component to ending the decades-long federal receivership, and I want to thank the highly qualified board members for continuing their service and strengthening GSWA as a local entity and for initiating a solution and expanding the pool of qualified applicants. This bill will help to ensure a succession of GSWA leadership that possesses diverse knowledge and skills needed to fulfill the mandates of the agency and ultimately benefits the environment and the people of Guam. I look forward to the discussion, and I thank the advanced support of my colleagues for this important piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place Bill Number 86-36COR, is there any Senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Sítus mossi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to just register a few brief remarks on Bill 86. I'd like to thank the author for putting this measure forward with the intent of providing leader stability for our Guam Solid Waste Authority for the GM qualifications. You know, ensuring continuity in our leadership and our Solid Waste Authority is absolutely critical with respect to maintaining administration of services by the government. You know, Bill 86, it provided, makes it clear that decision-makers recognize there are challenges with recruitment of a solid waste leadership due to limitations in the current law relative to qualifications for the GM position. You know, to address these issues, the bill allows for individuals who have education criterias in the field that are related to any of the identified fields of study such as business management, engineering management, engineering technology, civil engineering, environmental science, environmental engineering, to apply for the GM position going forward. So, Madam Speaker, I trust that Bill 86 will assist the Solid Waste Authority in recruiting new leadership as soon as practicable. So, sítus mossi for the opportunity, and I stand in full support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of 86-36. This is not the first time that this legislative body has been back here changing requirements for those different agencies and departments for leadership, and it just goes to show that sometimes it is difficult recruiting from off-island. But I think the most important part is that we have talent here on our island. We have our local grown folks who will be able to handle these departments and agencies and have the capabilities and the experience behind them. So I think just opening up the field for experience will help the agency get the leader that they need, but also help bring home our local kids and also our local people to apply for these jobs and these leadership positions within our government. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Sítus mossi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 86-36. You know, Madam Speaker, some of the... As far as I'm concerned, some of the best legislation that comes to us is when it comes to us from boards, commissions, agencies, you know, even just the general public, when they see a need. And when the need is there, that's one of the things that this body has to respond to. And I'm sure that the original authors of the legislation that created the educational requirements and the background requirements originally for the GSWA management position. And we all know that it's such a critical management position, especially at this time. I'm sure the intentions were very well focused, and they wanted to ensure, you know, the best, the brightest, the most capable. But obviously, even with that, Madam Speaker, in listening to the current chairman, Andrew Gale, he kind of gave us during the public hearing a little bit of the history of at least the past two managers. We know that currently, I believe Mr. Gaste, the current manager, has been doing a good job, but, you know, life goes on, and he's near retirement, and has expressed that desire, and is currently working remotely. And it looks like the board has had full confidence and has enjoyed his tenure there, but he's entitled to his future to spend time with his family in retire. But the manager before that, not saying that he wasn't qualified, but there was a discussion that it wasn't a fit. And so we see that even with the most stringent requirements and the current way the law is written, to have this high degree of level of education, experience, and the like, and the combination, even with that, Madam Speaker, it didn't guarantee that the candidate would be a fit. I also heard the author during the public hearing, and she may close with this once again, Madam Speaker, say that in some jurisdiction stateside, there are waste management municipalities that have simply a high school diploma with some experience with regard to operating a waste management system and being in that general manager position. So I just wanted to assure the people of Guam that we are in no way... I don't know if this is a politically correct term, but dumbing down or making the qualifications substandard. Once again, going back to the chairman, Andy Gale, he made it clear that there are three applicants right now who have environmental science degrees, that have degrees that are very vast and definitely represent the ability to do this work. So this, you know, kind of what I think, Madam Speaker, minor change, but necessary change to widen the pool. And as my good friend, the retiring Speaker Senator Ada, said, even for our people who are currently out attending school and getting degrees, maybe even comparable to the degrees of those who have applied now and who would qualify for the job once this bill passes and can be interviewed, I just think it's a great way to go, and I admire the author for responding immediately to the call from GSWA. And I think this is the right thing to do. I would hope we could pass it quickly and get this law changed so that the board could immediately convene. And once again, Madam Speaker, during the public hearing, the chairman did say that they wouldn't only just go with the current three, they would put out a new search perhaps to get the widest pool of applicants that they can. So they're ready. It looks like they're ready to move. And in closing, Madam Speaker, we know, not only now, the governor has made a presentation for billing to be attached to our utility bills. There's a discussion about mandating every household to have waste management services. There's another bill that I've co-sponsored that will call on landlords and the others in multiple dwellings to make sure they have proper receptacles. We know that our waste management system is very critical to our island right now. They are having some financial difficulties, so there's that discussion. So we need steady and solid management in this area to keep our environment clean, to continue to help clean up and probably eliminate some of the issues with the waste stream and the like. I won't go on and on, but we need key management in place. And we cannot have temporary management, although we appreciate it now, temporary management that's working remotely. We need a manager on Guam to take on and tackle these issues. So once again, I rise in support of Bill 86-36, and hopefully we pass it quickly and get it to the governor for signature and get solid management in place. Sítus mossi, Madam Speaker.
Sítus mossi, Senator. On the bill, is there any other Senator who would like to speak on the bill? If not, then the sponsor, you may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There is an amendment that needs to be made. It's basically a technical correction on the title, and the amendment is actually being currently sent right now, so hopefully it'll be uploaded very shortly for my colleagues. So in amending the bill, the structure was changed. So basically, what the title would say is an act to amend Section 51A 106A2, and then it strikes out and to add a new section, 51A 106A3, both... So that's what it strikes out. Basically, it's making sure that what was changed in the bill aligns with the title and vice versa. So it's basically ensuring the conformity is there.
All right. Senator, before I entertain that amendment, can you clarify? We are acting on a motion for Bill Number 86-36COR, but is it amended in a committee, or when you said the bill's been amended?
No, it was as is, but in the process of drafting it.
Okay, all right then.
Yeah, that part, we didn't complete the drafting of the title itself.
All right, then. So on the amendment, colleagues, the amendment is a change in the title? Is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? If not, is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Amendment passes. You may proceed, Senator, to close on the bill.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank, I appreciate all the comments and support from my colleagues. And yes, I think it's really important that, you know, we hire a very qualified general manager. And, you know, we're very fortunate that the current general manager has extended his service. I mean, he wanted to retire, I think, over a year, but he's waiting for Guam Solid Waste to hire his succeeding general manager. So, I appreciate all the support of my colleagues. And just a thought about, you know, hiring locally. So, that's one of the things that this bill would do. One of the degrees is actually provided by YOGI. And so, hopefully, in the future, that we're going to grow our own local talent here, if they're given the experience under the new general manager. So, thank you again, and Sisus Mosi.
Sisus Mosi, Senator. On the motion to place Bill Number 86-36COR on the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 94-36LS, and I recognize Senator Sabina Perez.
I moved to place Bill 94-36LS as amended by the Committee of Environment, Revenue, and Taxation Procurement, Labor Statistics Research and Planning. On the third reading file, and it's sponsored by myself and co-sponsored by you, Speaker Terri Strohlahey, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Mania Barnes, Senators V. Anthony Ada, Senator Frank Blos Jr., Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Christopher M. Duennas, Senator James C. Moylan, Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, Senator Clintony Rigel, Senator Joe S. Nagasin, and Senator Telo T. Taitegui. It's an act to add a new Section 15409C and amend Section 15410, all from Article 4 of Chapter 15, Title 4 Guam Code annotated relative to updating the Ethics in Government Training Program and requiring ethics training for all government of Guam employees. I moved to place it on the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
You may proceed.
Thank you. So, Bill 94-36, sponsored by myself and, again, all the co-sponsors that I mentioned previously, aims to expand mandatory ethics training from just the appointed and elected officials to all government of Guam employees. Bill 94-36 would mandate ethics training for new and current government of Guam employees to be accomplished within the first six months and eighteen months respectively. Additionally, refresher ethics training would be required every four years. The ethics training government would be developed by the newly impaneled Guam Ethics Commission, or alternatively, by provider approved by the Guam Ethics Commission. Ethics training is an important investment in our civil service. It will help reinforce best practices and what is required by law to protect the public interest, which ranges from fiduciary responsibility, standards of conduct, proper government spending and contracting, open government, reporting requirements, among others. The investment we make today with training and education with Bill 94-36 is an important proactive measure that can ensure government integrity and that resources are used appropriately, which is worth close to $1 billion every budget cycle. Ethical behavior is integral to our conception of an affet malik in how we treat others and our natural environment. It is also the cornerstone of an accountable and transparent government, which the people of Guam rely on for critical services. I would like to thank our government stakeholders and community members for their support and the support of my co-sponsors, and I look forward to the dialogue and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill Number 94-36LS, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion to place that bill in third reading? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of Bill 94-36. I think this bill's been a long time in coming within the government of Guam, certainly for elected officials and department directors and people that hold those respective positions in government. You know, we've all been required to take these ethics courses, I guess, once every four years, and certainly, if we stay in our positions longer than that, we have to go back and take the course again and renew our ethics course. This requirement, however, has not been put in place for the rest of government of Guam. We have over, what, 10,000, 11,000 employees in the government, many of whom will be career employees that can be in office probably for 30-plus years or more. And yet, you know, we still see and hear issues with regards, unfortunately, while it may be a small percentage, we still have individuals in the government, unfortunately, that use and abuse their respective positions. And that type of activity doesn't simply occur at our level, so it occurs at all levels within the government of Guam, be it the customs officer who's been indicted and convicted for bringing in illegal material into the island, be it the individual that works in processing driver's license up at Rev and Tax. I mean, the list goes on. I think we're all very aware. Be it the government employee who takes their travel money, and instead of officially going on a government trip, they take the money and keep it. We continue to hear of these type of examples. And it's very important, I think, we institutionalize these standards in our government with the expectation that anyone, as I've often said, I think anyone who works for the government of Guam, who receives a paycheck from the people of Guam, should act responsibly. We put too much of a shield around the rest of the government. And when the government employee does not act responsibly, of course, we're very quick to say, oh, it's a personnel matter. It's not something that we can respond to. We can't answer to it. We can't allow the people of Guam to even be aware of what action, improper action, an employee may have taken. Most of us, from a very basic level, kind of know right from wrong. Maybe, very rarely are there gray areas. Maybe there are. But we still see these examples happen. And I think we should be proactive to put this requirement forward so that hopefully, you know, an employee will think twice before he or she takes actions that they know quite well perhaps is not right. And there are examples of that that already exist and probably will continue to exist, unfortunately, because some people choose not to always do the right thing. That's a sad reality, but that happens in our government every single day. With regards to this training, I know there's going to be additional work involved, certainly, to have the instructors available and have the courses available at a more cost-effective amount so that all our employees within the reasonable timeframe will be able to go through this ethics training. But it's not insurmountable. I mean, certainly, Department of Administration for many years has had different types of training programs available. One, for example, on sexual harassment, which is pretty much looked at as a standard training within government of Guam department and agencies. My goodness, if I wanted to, I could take a class on stress management, which probably many of us would want to do every now and then, because I'm sure we all go through different levels of that. But this is something we should have an expectation for in terms of accountability and responsibility in the government, because I think it's very hard for an employee to come back and say, oh, I didn't know. I didn't know that that was the wrong decision to make when, you know, I used my position to favor someone or misuse public resources. It could be as simple as taking the official vehicle and driving it around all day instead of going to, you know, the job site and performing someone's responsible job. And that happens often, sad to say. But I certainly support this bill and thank the author for putting it forth. I hope this continues a trend in the government of Guam to open up and remove those curtains that we cover the rest of the actions of the government. I think we need to be responsible when we're entrusted with public resources, and that's just not simply limited to those at the very top. It's something that everyone throughout our government, from the top to the bottom to the middle, should be responsible for. And I think by providing this opportunity, hopefully, it will minimize some of the misdeeds and crimes that we see happening in our government. With that, Madam Speaker, I certainly, as I mentioned, rise in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill Number 94-36, Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Sisus Mosi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to stand in support of Bill 94. You know, Madam Speaker, requiring all public sector employees to complete an ethics in government training as required by elected and appointed officials is the step in the right direction. As an elected official, I recognize the value of participating in an ethics in government program. You know, Madam Speaker, requiring government employees to complete an ethics training at least once every four years is an effective tool against inappropriate and illegal conduct, including temptations to engage in such activity. Government employees, including elected and appointed officials, are paid for by taxpayers and as such must be held to the highest standard of public service. No politician, no political party, business, or pari-pari culture should ever be able to influence the operations of government. Madam Speaker, for these reasons, I urge my colleagues to stand in support with me of Bill 94, and I thank Senator Perez for introducing this much-needed legislation. I'm grateful to be added as a co-sponsor. Sisus Mosi, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Mosi, Senator. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on Bill Number 94-36? Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I just have a question of the author, the main author, sponsor of the bill, W. S. Yield. And my question is, I just want to know what the intent of the ethics training, if it were to be expanded to all employees of the government of Guam? Because we understand that initially, it was with directors and people of certain responsibility, and the idea was to have ethics training so as the corruptible nature of having power would be contained by ethical training. So, now that it's applied across the board to all employees of government, which, you know, there's a broad range of responsibilities and duties in government service. And so, my question is, in looking at Section 15410 titled Ethics in Government Program Guidelines, is it contemplated by the author that the program topics that are listed under A would apply equally across all employees? Because the nature of the training for boards and commissions and directors and their immediate supervisors may not be as applicable or as relevant to the broad duties of every single government employee. So, is it intended that Guam statutes, Guam statutes concerning lobbying, procurement, analyzing and solving ethics-related dilemmas, you know, there's a laundry list on 1514A. So, I just want to understand, because this is going to be quite an endeavor for the government, and is it just intended that that level of training for directors and boards and of commissions and stuff should also apply to even the most entry-level position of the government of Guam?
Senator Perez, do you yield to the question?
Thank you. I do yield, and thank you to the good senator for that question. So, in drafting this bill, we did reach out to the Ethics Commission, and they were in full support. And they actually see a model being used in Hawaii that they feel that can be very feasible in applying this. And so, I think, you know, it's really the Ethics Commission that is going to be driving this curriculum. But yes, as it states in law, all of these areas are going to be included pending further development from the Ethics Commission. So, it's really more of a collaborative effort, I feel. But yeah, these are all topics, I think, you know, if these are best practices, I mean, the idea is that we're trying to create a, you know, we're trying to raise the bar, right, when it comes to our civil service, and, you know, investing in there and educating them about what the statutes are, and, you know, considering that, you know, they may be an employee in one area but might, you know, transition to a new position. So, you know, I think education is so important, and, you know, we see the positive benefits when we invest in the education of our people. And yeah, I think we want to create a culture, too. It, you know, it helps to create this culture of, you know, good practices, best practices in our agencies. And so, the more we educate our employees about all facets of ethics, the more we can create the culture that we are seeking. Instead of having to, you know, be more of a disciplinary type of approach when it comes to ethics, it'd be more of a proactive approach. So, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Torres, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the co-sponsor, for the sponsor for that answer. I would like to suggest, though, that then perhaps there is a minor amendment that could be done to subsection A, which starts out with the program topic "shall include but not be limited to." "Shall include" means that every single one in that laundry list is from 1 to 10. So, based on the answer that was given, perhaps that line 10 of page three should then be amended to put the program topics "may include but not be limited to," so that it gives, in essence, in the spirit of the intent of this bill, it gives the Ethics Commission the latitude to develop programs for specific areas of employees where, you know, certain topics may be applicable, certain topics may not be applicable. Because the intent, I'm sure, is to make sure that everybody has all the information needed, but if it's not relevant to the position, for example, if you're a grass cutter, maybe Guam procurement laws and regulations or contracting laws and regulations may not be necessarily anything that your job would ever, the range of responsibility would ever entail, so the likelihood of committing an ethical violation in that regard really is remote. So, that would be my follow-up comment to the answer, but I appreciate the answer, Madam Speaker.
Are you making an amendment, Senator?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I would like to propose amendment.
Okay, so on the amendment, the amendment is to change one word. Is there any objection to hearing this amendment without it being in writing? You wanted it in writing? All right.
Yeah, I object to the amendment altogether. I think that there's...
Oh, sorry. It's okay. Yeah, just one sec. So, if there any objection to proceeding on the amendment, it's to change the word "shall" to "may." It's not in writing, though. So, if there's not, we will hear. Is there any objection to this amendment or anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Yeah, I object to the amendment. I think there's still ways to address all of these areas without having to go into depth. And I don't want to have a loophole where the "may" would mean that some of the information is not actually used in the training program. So, you know, I would rather have it more rigorous than to have it more lenient. And there are ways, you know, as a teacher, I know there's ways to level it up or level it down depending on the information that's needed by the recipient. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the amendment? On the amendment, if not, Senator Torres, you may close on the amendment. Colleagues, it's on page three, line 10, changing the word "shall" to "may."
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In closing, I would, I hope that the body book...
In closing, I would, I hope that the body will consider, because just, we know that for those of us who have taken the ethics training, we also, we know that in the discussion, in the discussion process, oftentimes, the instructor will modify things or put the lesson within the context of our jobs in, you know, valid examples, for example, valid examples of the topic area that we would understand. The reason that I, and so the reason I think that it's important, if you're going to now open this up to everyone in the government, from the highest level to the entry-level employee, with extreme responsibility and with very minimal responsibility and no supervisory, by changing shall to may, you allow the Ethics Commission the latitude to develop the program that they will. I believe that the Ethics Commission has the desire to then approve all different things, but all different types of lessons per employee category. What I'm afraid of is when you have the word shall in the law, a shall is a shall, a shall is not a may. A may gives you the latitude to take all or some to devise a program that's suitable and relevant to the employees and to the lessons that are relevant to their scheme of authority. But shall is not, doesn't give them the latitude, and that's simply what I'm pointing out. So I don't believe that the Commission intends to have any loopholes, but it does at least make it feasible for them to develop programs and ethical curriculum that would be, ethics curriculum that would be applicable. So I just ask my colleagues to, you know, consider an open mind. Where shall gives you no options, the word may does give you options, and so I hope that they can support this amendment.
On the amendment, there's been objections, so all, you want to speak on the amendment, Senator Blasch? She was closing on the amendment already. Yeah, she closed on the amendment already.
You closed it, okay.
On the amendment, though, we're going to take a vote, so please raise your hand. All those who are in favor of the amendment, changing the word shall to may, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Blasch on the bill, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full in support of the bill, recognizing that this is, this is a long time coming. This is a bill that, this is something that we should have actually put as a requirement for government service since government began. But I also rise with concern about the practicality and reasonableness of the timelines that the bill has put in place here. We just recently tried to amend language that would give some flexibility, but recognizing now that there is some structure that is necessary for the course, if you will, to be provided. I look at this as when the Ethics Commission or the body that is, the person that's supposed to put this course together. The course that we took, Madam Speaker, was four hours long. I'm looking at what is now going to be required of this course, and it's probably going to be a little bit longer than that. Not to take away from it, and it's probably going to be necessary. But then, if you do do some simple math, if you've got about 13,000 employees that are going to be affected by this, by this legislation, 13,000 employees that are going to need to take this course, at an average of about 40 people per course, you're looking at over 350 classes that's going to be provided. This legislation says that upon enactment, that these current employees have 18 months from enactment to take the course. But I ask, Madam Speaker, I don't know if within 18 months, there's going to be a course that's going to be put together for this. So I'm a little concerned there in that the timeline or the timeframe that we are placing in this legislation may not be attainable. Recognizing that a course has to be developed, it has to be approved, and then all the logistics necessary to be able to get 13,000 employees into these courses, we may need to lengthen that 18 months. So in the spirit of, you know, wanting to make sure that this bill, that this legislation, that this measure can be successfully implemented without rushing to try to meet timelines or the timeline that it has there, I'd like to be able to propose an amendment to, again, this is another one of those amendments, Madam Speaker, I don't have it in writing yet, but it's actually on page two, line nine, where it says, actually, starting from line eight, all existing government employees will be required to attend an ethics training within, instead of the 18 months, actually doubled to 36 months. Because I don't think that within 18 months, we'll be able to get a course put together, course, the approval of the course, and then funnel 18 or 13,000 employees during that timeframe, figuring that this is probably going to be at least an eight-hour course, 300, over 350 courses, classes. So I'd like to make that amendment again. Page two, line nine, instead of 18 months, make it 36 months.
Senator, may I suggest line 16?
Line 16 as well, Madam Speaker?
Line nine is the intent.
Okay.
So line 16 is...
So the intent and the actionable section, and then again, I'm going to make that amendment or restate my amendment. Actually, Madam Speaker, does it require two separate amendments, or can I just make it one amendment because it's two separate areas of the bill?
I would suggest that one is enough.
Well, notwithstanding, Madam Speaker, then we'll make it one, okay? So that any reference to 18 months for the training, which is located on page two, line nine, and line 16.
All right.
It reflect, instead of 18, it says 36 months.
Okay, we have an amendment, it's not in writing, it's to change the number 18 months to 36 months in section two of the bill and also in the legislative intent. So it changes 18 months to 36 months. Is there any objection to acting on this amendment without it being in writing? Okay, so there's an objection, so we are going to take a one-minute recess.
We're back in session from our recess. We're back in session from our recess. Senator Blas, the amendment's in writing now and the clerks have it uploaded. Senator Blas, the amendment's in writing now and the clerks have it uploaded. So you may proceed on the amendment. So you may proceed on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, for the edification and for the convenience of the body, Madam Speaker, for the edification and for the convenience of the body, it has been uploaded into the drive. it has been uploaded into the drive. And again, reiterate my amendment to change eighteen months found in lines two and line sixteen, And again, reiterate my amendment to change eighteen months found in lines two and line sixteen, or lines nine and line sixteen of page two to thirty-six. or lines nine and line sixteen of page two to thirty-six.
All right, on the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? All right, on the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? If not, Senator Blas, you may close on the amendment. If not, Senator Blas, you may close on the amendment.
Close. Close.
All right, and so on the amendment, we're going to vote now. All right, and so on the amendment, we're going to vote now. There's been an objection, so all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. There's been an objection, so all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, right? It's unanimous, right? Okay, amendment passes. Okay, amendment passes. Senator Blas, you're still recognized on the bill? Senator Blas, you're still recognized on the bill?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, if the author of the bill can actually yield to a questionnaire, And Madam Speaker, if the author of the bill can actually yield to a questionnaire, it's actually found on page four, section four, the effective date that this act shall be effective it's actually found on page four, section four, the effective date that this act shall be effective one year after enactment. one year after enactment. So are we basically saying, basically what that is, is that nothing will move on this thing So are we basically saying, basically what that is, is that nothing will move on this thing until one year after it gets signed into law? until one year after it gets signed into law? Because that's what it's saying. Because that's what it's saying. I just wanted to make sure that that was the intent. I just wanted to make sure that that was the intent.
Would you like the sponsor to yield? Would you like the sponsor to yield?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Would the sponsor yield to that question? Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I do yield to the question. Yes, Madam Speaker, I do yield to the question. And this actually was proposed by the Ethics Commission. And this actually was proposed by the Ethics Commission. And they felt that if given a year, that would give them enough time to have the curriculum And they felt that if given a year, that would give them enough time to have the curriculum ready to go, and they were looking at an online program. ready to go, and they were looking at an online program. And so they felt after that year, they'll be ready to roll out the training. And so they felt after that year, they'll be ready to roll out the training. So even though the enactment date is one year, they would use that time to actually get it ready. So even though the enactment date is one year, they would use that time to actually get it ready.
Senator Blas? Senator Blas?
Madam Speaker, if that is the case, based on the way this legislation is written, Madam Speaker, if that is the case, based on the way this legislation is written, they have no authority to be able to move on anything until one year after it's signed. they have no authority to be able to move on anything until one year after it's signed. If you read the law, read the legislation or the language as is proposed, If you read the law, read the legislation or the language as is proposed, everything that you have in sections two and section three is not actionable everything that you have in sections two and section three is not actionable until one year after it's enacted into law. until one year after it's enacted into law. I don't think that was the intent. I don't think that was the intent. I don't, so, you know, I, again, there are actionable items I don't, so, you know, I, again, there are actionable items that the Ethics Commission would have to take to be able to do the training. that the Ethics Commission would have to take to be able to do the training. But the way this is set up is, it's not going to, none of that is actionable until one year later. But the way this is set up is, it's not going to, none of that is actionable until one year later. So I don't know if that was the, I mean, it looks counterproductive to me. So I don't know if that was the, I mean, it looks counterproductive to me. Because how then do, as this body, how then do we authorize something to be done Because how then do, as this body, how then do we authorize something to be done six months from now when they're not authorized to do anything until one year from now? six months from now when they're not authorized to do anything until one year from now? So So I understand in the need to be able to ramp things up, to prepare, to build the course I understand in the need to be able to ramp things up, to prepare, to build the course and everything, that my expectation would have been that once this is signed, and everything, that my expectation would have been that once this is signed, and I don't anticipate this is going to be vetoed, but once this is signed into law, and I don't anticipate this is going to be vetoed, but once this is signed into law, then the Ethics Commission can start on that action. then the Ethics Commission can start on that action. Now, if it takes them one year to do that, that's why the initial, the previous amendment, Now, if it takes them one year to do that, that's why the initial, the previous amendment, which was passed for thirty-six, that gives them now twenty-six months to be able to do this. which was passed for thirty-six, that gives them now twenty-six months to be able to do this. So just basically, in reading this, it's not going to, nothing's going to be actionable So just basically, in reading this, it's not going to, nothing's going to be actionable until 2022, right? until 2022, right?
Twenty twenty-one, I know, right? Twenty twenty-one, I know, right?
Yeah, 2022. Yeah, 2022. So that's my only concern. So that's my only concern. Can we take a one minute, one minute recess, thirty seconds even, just to, okay? Can we take a one minute, one minute recess, thirty seconds even, just to, okay? Please? Please?
One minute recess. One minute recess.
The good lady from Zonia. The good lady from Zonia.
We're back from recess. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll use my rest of my time back to the author. She's going to make the amendment.
All right, on the bill, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the bill? Not, then the author may close on the bill?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I do appreciate the discussion by my colleague. And I think after consulting with legal, yeah, we agree that section four should be struck. We don't want to have any unintended consequences of having to withhold the preparing of the curriculum. And so, given that the previous amendment was to allow for thirty-six months, that would assist in giving them time to develop it as well as implement it. So again, I would like to thank my colleagues for their support. I think, you know, it's important to invest in our workers, our civil service, to ensure, you know, that ethics is being practiced throughout our government, and especially to ensure a higher level of protection of our public interest. So thank you again, thanks.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, bill number ninety-four dash thirty-six L S, on the motion to place it in third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on bill number forty-eight dash thirty-six C O R. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move bill forty-eight dash thirty-six C O R as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Exchange Utilities and the Arts to the third reading. And to speak on it, please, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, bill forty-eight dash thirty-six allows for the inclusion of mayoral offices and municipal planning council projects to be included for consideration for funding by qualifying certificate holders' community benefit requirements. The mayoral offices and municipal planning councils will also be required to apply for the grants under the same conditions and requirements as nonprofit organizations. Madam Speaker, in the public hearing that we had on bill forty-eight dash thirty-six, the administrator and the CEO, Melanie Mindiola, came from GITA, you know, testified that in 2019, what GITA has done is that they launched the Qualifying Certificate Community Contribution Grant Program. And what it was, is this program was, the goal of the program was to be more transparent and responsible with the funds received by the QC beneficiaries, and to more effectively deploy these funds to the broad spectrum of the community. So what happened was that these grants were given now in different times of the year, and each series had a specific eligibility requirement and funding priorities. And so far to this date, GITA has provided for two series of grant applications, and is looking to distribute more funds for the most recently approved third series. And what bill forty-eight dash thirty-six does is that it allows for the mayor's council and the mayor's offices and the MPCs to be a part now and a priority when they do issue these grants. She did recognize that, based on feedback from the village mayors, that GITA has made it a point to include the mayor's offices and other appropriate entities as eligible applicants for future QCC grant funding series. The administrator had no objection to this language being placed in. So, you know, we want to just go ahead and ensure that we allow our mayors a more opportunities for funding for village projects that comply with what the GITA QC benefits require. We know that budgets are coming up, funds are going to be tied, and any way that we can give mayors an additional funding source for their programs and within the villages will be greatly appreciated by them. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place bill number forty-eight dash thirty-six C O R as amended by the committee on the third reading file, would anyone like to be recognized? Senator Tadic, you are recognized.
Situus Maasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to register brief remarks in full support of bill forty-eight. I thank the president and vice president of the Mayor's Council of Guam, Mayor Jesse Alec of P V N, Mayor Robert Hoffman of San Yohay, for testifying in support of bill forty-eight. I thank these mayors for speaking to the importance of providing access to available qualifying certificate community contributions for villages that are working to rehabilitate facilities or develop new programs and projects for our family. And Madam Speaker, I thank Senator Tony Ada for exploring other funding resources that our villages may consider pursuing to assist the various community projects. Bill forty-eight is especially welcome at a time when the resources, such as limited gaming fund, which is used to support village programs, is tracking at $206,027 as of March 31st, 2021, which is well below the $1,692, well, actually, it's $1.6 million plus level adopted in the FY 2021 Budget Act. So I stand in full support of this measure and ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On bill number forty-eight dash thirty-six, Senator Duane, you are...
Situus Maasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to arise once again in full support of bill forty-eight thirty-six. You know, Madam Speaker, probably next, we're going to be listening to bill fifty-one thirty-six. And I bring that up because in bill fifty-one, we will be addressing an issue whereby we'll be doing a transfer of property to be able to allow the Guam Football Association...
Sorry, Senator?
Yes.
Please confine your remarks to the bill that...
It's very appropriate, Madam Speaker, and I'll get off of that quickly. The reason why I bring that up is because, and I'll probably speak on that as well, is that the resources of some organizations that provide opportunities for our young people to play soccer, football, to have fields and opportunities to go out and really play sports and do outside activities and have our children, you know, build their lives by having that experience of engaging in all kinds of different activities. And as my good friend, the retiring speaker, Senator Tadic, we mentioned, the drastic decrease in the limited gaming fund that really does enhance the Mayor's Council of Guam with regard to their ability, the main reason they use that money, as well as Parks and Rec and as well as Department of Education, they use that money primarily to fund sports activities for our kids at the village level, to subsidize the shortfalls in education where there's not sometimes enough money to maintain fields and buy uniforms for our kids, such as DPR. And so with this bill, at least that opportunity now for tax breaks and incentives to be able to assist the Mayor's Council of Guam to have an additional resource to provide opportunities for the mayors to have investments in their villages to try to keep up with the difficulty of maintaining sports facilities and just all the other work that the mayors do. of maintaining sports facilities and just all the other work that the mayors do. So, Madam Speaker, there's a lot of, you know, the intent here is really, really good. In closing, we know that other activities have been taken on with regard to this. Hamburger Road was done this way, to be able to just get private investment sometime in there to provide for tax breaks and incentives. So, these opportunities, when they come up, I think are very important, and I think this bill does just that. So I thank the author for being innovative, for expanding opportunities for investment in our community projects, and I look forward to voting in the affirmative on this bill, Madam Speaker. Sutus Masi.
Sutus Masi. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized? Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this measure. The bill went through my committee. We held the public hearing on it, and at the public hearing, there was good testimony and support of the measure from the mayors. There was some testimony from the Guam Economic Development Authority, more to the effect that they felt that perhaps the language is unnecessary and it's something they can already accomplish. But I believe putting it in statute and making it solid will ensure that not only this GIDEA board, but future boards would be aware that this is something they can use these funds for. It just spells it out and makes it crystal clear. Sure, the GIDEA board now and the GIDEA administrator now may say that they're all for it, but future GIDEA boards, future administrators, might not really think that it's something appropriate that this funding should go towards. And I think this just solidifies that, makes it known that they can use this funding for the mayors. So I do rise in support, and I would like to also ask to be added as a cosponsor to the measure. I know there was some talk about that during the public hearing, and in fact, we were going to add myself and some others as cosponsors in committee, but it was recommended that adding cosponsors shouldn't be done in committee and rather should be accomplished on the floor. So, I'd like to ask to be added as a cosponsor and rise in full support of the measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bills, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in the hopes that I can be also added as a cosponsor to the piece of legislation, I stand in support of the measure as well. I have to agree with my good colleague from Ipana in, you know, why this measure is important. Granted, yes, that GIDEA has stated that this is something that they already do, but that's this board, you know, and this is a program that's going to be, that's still going to be in existence, you know, past this board and into future boards. And this is our way of making sure that, you know, that there is going to continue to be that consideration of the funding for programs for the municipal, for the different municipalities and the villages. But more so also, it gives these businesses who have these programs, these certificates, the opportunity to develop those relationships they have within the villages that they are based out over the villages they serve. It's a great way of the community helping the community, and I think that what this legislation will do will foster that. So, you know, I want to thank and applaud the author for this legislation and the committee for its speeding work on this, and I'm asking my colleagues for their support as well on this measure. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this bill that has been introduced by Senator Ada. I think it provides an opportunity, definitely at the village level, to expand projects that are going to benefit our community, be it sports activities or other things of that nature that we'd like to see our young people, probably some of our older people more engaged in. And whether or not GIDEA thinks it's necessary, I don't think probably most people or businesses are aware that they have the opportunity to take advantage of these certificates for this purpose. So, at least this bill makes that very clear, so those opportunities can be provided. With that, I'd also like to be a cosponsor of this legislation. Certainly thank Senator Ada for his foresight with regards to this issue, and I'm very happy to vote and support this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, on the bill, would anyone else like to be recognized? If not, the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank all my colleagues for their input in this piece of legislation. I'd just like to make one amendment, and that would be to include Senator Rigel, my chairman for the committee, Senator Titekwe, Duñez, Blas, and Brown, all as cosponsors. I thank my committee chair for hearing this bill and placing it onto this session agenda so that the mayors will be able to take this opportunity to apply for funding as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the time.
Senator, could you repeat your motion?
It will be to place Senator Rigel, Titekwe, Duñez, Blas, and Brown, all as cosponsors. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to place additional cosponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on the motion to place Bill Number 48-36COR as amended by the committee into the third reading file. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 51. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to make the motion to pass on file Bill 51-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, and Justice and Culture, and it's an act relative to the authorization for the use of real property within the administrative jurisdiction of the Guam Waterworks Authority for the construction and maintenance of soccer fields and related facilities sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terlai and co-sponsored by Senators Telenia Cruz Nelson and Sabina Flores Perez upon request by the sponsor.
On the motion to pass Bill Number 51-36COR, to pass it on file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 63-36LS. Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 63 to the bottom of the session agenda.
So there's a motion to pass on file, Bill Number 63, again. Is there any objection to that motion? Okay, we're going to clarify. You want that at the bottom of the agenda. My understanding that it's the same as passing it on file. It goes to the bottom of the agenda, but we will clarify, the motion is to place this at the bottom of the agenda. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. That was Bill Number 63-36. We are now on Bill Number 100-36COR. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 100-36COR on the third reading file and ask that I be given the opportunity to speak on it.
Yes, please, but please read the full title.
This is Bill Number 100-36COR as amended by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens, an act to amend Section 11105 of Chapter 11, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing the Public Defender Service Corporation to receive and administer grants and enter into intra-governmental and intergovernmental agreements and to establishing an elder law center within the corporation to provide legal services for Guam's elderly population.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill Number 100 seeks to authorize the Public Defender Service Corporation to apply for, receive, and administer federal grants to fund legal services tailored specifically for Guam's elderly population. Caring for Armanamku is one of our island culture's central pillars, and cherishing our elderly loved ones remains integral to honoring their legacy. This mentality should extend to all facets of their life, and it starts with providing one of our island's most vulnerable populations access to legal services. As testified by Public Health Division of Senior Citizens and the Elder Justice Center, we're looking at over 400 of Armanamku waiting for legal assistance, and I'd like to thank our partners who are working tirelessly to fill this gap. Bill 100 aims to empower the Public Defender Service Corporation to further accomplish this goal. Under Guam law, the PDSC is mandated to assist indigent residents in criminal and civil matters. Due to an increase in criminal cases, the PDSC Board of Trustees issued moratoriums on civil and domestic issues in 1997, 1999, and 2003, limiting the amount of civil work provided by the PDSC. Since 2003, the PDSC has not handled civil matters in the same volume since its inception in 1975. For the information of the body, I'd like to provide some clarification regarding the amendments made to the bill. Bill 100 was amended to incorporate grant buzzwords, namely to provide legal assistance to individuals who are in the greatest economic and social need of legal assistance and representation. This was a recommendation by councils at the Elder Justice Center. Madam Speaker, I'm happy to inform this body that the PDSC opened the Elder Justice Center on March 15, 2021. A grand opening is scheduled for Senior Citizens Month next month in May, and I want to thank our partners at PDSC and their Board of Trustees for this incredible milestone for our community. I'm certainly hopeful that with Bill Number 100, we can equip the PDSC with the tools to ensure longstanding, necessary legal services for Armanamku. Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sutus Masi, Senator. On Bill Number 100-36, would anyone like to be recognized? Senator Titekwe, you are recognized.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 100 and appreciate how helpful this legislation can be for Guam in assessing new grant funding specific to providing legal service for Armanamku. Now, according to the Public Defender Service Corporation, Bill 100 would facilitate creating more permanent elder justice center that can both provide legal service and advocate for our elders' issues, and that it is anticipated that grants and subgrants will be pursued as well to provide the elder abuse training and advocacy and protection. Bill 100 is especially important as a way to improve access to legal services by Armanamku. Those who do not have the means to hire a lawyer in private practice or may not have family members to assist them with critical health and financial matters, Madam Speaker, this measure will ensure that basic legal services such as wills, power of attorneys, living wills, and certain guardianships are made available to Armanamku. Bill 100 will help bring dignity and peace of mind to Armanamku, particularly during her golden years, ensuring that our SINAs, with all the issues that might be facing during their retirement, have one less thing to worry about. Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sutus Masi, Senator. On Bill Number 100-36, would anyone like to be recognized? If not, then sponsor, you may close on the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to make one amendment to the bill to add Senator Telo Titekwe as a cosponsor. I'd like to thank my colleagues and my cosponsors for their support, and I ask for positive consideration from this body. Sutus Masi.
Sutus Masi. On the motion to add Senator Titekwe as cosponsor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. And on the motion to place Bill Number 100-36COR as amended by the committee to the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Resolution Number 46-36LS. Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Resolution Number 46-36LS introduced by myself relative to urging the National Marine Fisheries Service to delay the proposed coral critical habitat designation process until such time that the five-year coral status review and coral recovery plan can be completed, as well as urging the Department of Agriculture to work in coordination with the NMFS to identify appropriate coral critical habitat for Guam, using the best scientific information available to the third reading file and to discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Resolution 46-36LS just aligns our body with our fellow territories throughout the Pacific in ensuring that we have the best scientific information available to address our critical coral habitats locally. By asking for a pause on the critical coral habitat designation, we allow the scientists to continue doing the good work that they do to learn more about our reefs and ensure that every decision made is tailored to our unique circumstances locally. I'd like to thank our Magahaga for her work alongside the governors of the CNMI and American Samoa in an effort to extend the public commenting period for this designation, but the purpose of this is to allow the people living on the island to provide the important context and perspective needed on these types of federal designations. These local comments, when combined with the scientific data, are the best way to make these types of designations, and this is why I introduced the resolution in partnership with the Department of Agriculture, and I thank the Department of Agriculture for bringing this issue to my attention. Basically, what this resolution does is it does the same thing that they've done in the CNMI and American Samoa, is asking that we just put a pause on this critical habitat designation until they complete the studies that they're supposed to complete, which shouldn't take that much longer. Should, I believe it's just a few more, it's a five-year coral status review and recovery plan. And I think once that plan's complete, then they can do a better job of determining exactly what areas should be deemed as critical coral habitat. My understanding and based on the testimony received during the public hearing was that they basically, when they decided to come out with this designation, they just sort of did a very easy blanket designation and just said, "Let's designate all these islands and all these areas as critical coral habitat," without getting into the specifics of the science necessary to determine whether or not the corals that they've deemed as endangered species are in fact in these habitats that they're designating as critical. So all this does is ask for a pause on this designation until such time they can complete their studies, and then at that time, they should be able to determine if in fact those corals that are triggering this critical habitat designation are in fact in the places where they're proposing to deem as critical habitat. So with that, Madam Speaker, I just ask my colleagues for their support on this resolution. And I have nothing further to state on the resolution at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on the resolution, and I want to thank the author of the resolution.
And I want to thank the author of the resolution. Thank you very much. You're a good, my good senator from Epe. Because this resolution actually has a far more reaching, basically, statement than just to ask, to request. I mean, if there's anything that I wanted, the language to be a little bit more stronger than requesting. This is another, again, overreach, outreach, underreach, whatever reach you want to, okay, of an outside entity, outside of, you know, respecting the authority and respecting the responsibility that the governments of not just Guam, but the American Samoa and the CNMI, to participate in the rulemaking that their jurisdictions are going to have to now abide to. It was kind of disturbing when, if you read through the resolution, and in recognizing that the National Marine Fisheries was going to make this ruling despite having any consultation with the affected, with the governments of the affected areas. And, you know, Madam Speaker, it's the principle of the matter of, we are continuing to strive to be effective and to properly represent our jurisdictions. And in this case, in this resolution, obviously Guam. But it also speaks to, again, also the concern, I'm sure, that both the governments of America and Samoa and the CNMI have. So while, again, this resolution is specific in nature, the issue here is broader in scope. And, you know, Madam Speaker, I'm sure you can agree with me that there are far too many times instances such as this. You know, we wake up in the morning, and we actually, sometimes we read and watch on CNN or Fox News, that now we've got this new mandate that we have to abide by, and we had no input into it. And so, if more so for that principle than for what it's worth, I stand in full support of this measure. And I'm asking my colleagues to do the same. Because if we don't stand to this, what more is going to happen in other areas? Thank you again, Madam Speaker. And I want, once again, I want to thank my colleague from Epe. And, you know, again, I stand in full support here in hopes that I also can be a co-sponsor to the resolution. Okay? I can't make that motion or let him make that motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this resolution. And I think, you know, this is a very conservative ask, I think, considering the imposition, as a retiring speaker has said, regarding critical habitat designation. And so something like this was actually proposed without the knowledge or the awareness by local entities until like the 12th hour of this. And I'm really glad that BSP, Department of Ag, and other agencies were apprised of it and immediately objected to it. And I think it's suspect. It's definitely, this process is suspect because, you know, critical habitat was determined to be for those areas that were adjacent to civilian lands and not military-adjacent lands. The other thing that was suspect is, you know, when you're dealing with critical habitat, it takes years to really establish this designation. And what we're seeing is an expedited process in a matter of months. And like the sponsor of this resolution was saying is that the science wasn't all there. It was based on conversations. And again, when we're dealing with rulemaking, especially with biological determinations, you have to have that hard data and hard facts and studies that take quite a while. And so, again, you know, the other aspect that was suspect is the maps. The maps didn't really correspond with the areas that would have corals and whether these endangered species actually exist. And then when we're talking about coral reef habitat protection, you know, how do you really establish a boundary in the ocean? You know, is that boundary going to prevent any pollution from drifting from one area to another? It's only been done in, I think, Alaska, and it hasn't been done very often. And, and I guess, you know, we're kind of like the guinea pigs when it comes to this critical habitat designation. So, yeah, this process is definitely suspect, and this is a wise measure and resolution, and I thank the sponsor for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else wishing to speak on the resolution? Speaker Therese Terlahey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in support of this resolution, and I thank the sponsor for it. And I agree with the previous speakers that, if anything, it's just not strong enough because it's requesting an extension of a deadline that all of our islands have been given for this federal designation of critical habitat surrounding our entire shoreline. And except, of course, for those military properties that are right now under the control of the federal government, those are exempt from this designation of critical habitat. And so the governors had together, or they had asked for an extension and only been granted, I think, a 30-day extension. So we have a deadline on us, and I think it's in May. May, a deadline for comments. Again, they're asking for our comments, and that's all they're asking for. They're not asking for our consent, just our comments. And so, we, the government of Guam, through this resolution are asking for an extension to submit comments until after we have completed at least a five-year study of coral that has been ongoing. It's estimated to be completed in February 2022. And the agencies that testified before us and have submitted testimony have indicated that they believe that's very reasonable before this critical habitat is established that would restrict activities. And not just activities in these critical habitat, it's going to restrict landowners and require them to get additional permitting for many uses of their land. And interestingly, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, who is the link with NOAA here on Guam, and of course, in charge of our Coastal Management Zone and Seashore Protection Acts, and I think, doing a very good job. What they said was that the three specific corals not proven to exist in Guam, it's, I guess, there's been a couple, people have written that they've seen it or some other indications. But according to BSP, it's not proven that these three corals that they are trying to protect by designating the entire seashore a critical habitat, that these three corals are not proven to exist. And so the restriction is too broad. They've also said that the designation has not been proven to protect and not the best way to protect those specific species that they claim they're trying to protect. And so while we are trying, in the government of Guam, and they cited this as well in their testimony, how the local government has implemented several measures, many measures, over years, trying to protect coral, trying to ensure that, you know, dredging of coral is not our standard practice anymore, that we stand up and we say no to just the blanket dredging of coral, and actually, we've enacted seashore protection acts. We've enacted laws, I think, consistently over the years to, because we recognize that these, these critical habitats for coral are critical to fishermen. We recognize that these are critical to the survival of our cultures, our traditions, and livelihoods, and food sustainability. So it's not that we're trying to say we don't want that kind of protection. We want protection, but we don't want restrictions put on that are unnecessary, not targeted, not conducive, and very much will impede fishermen, the landowners adjacent, and the activities in these waters. And again, I take great exception to the fact that they take exception to federal land from these restrictions. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker Terlahey. Anyone else wishing to speak on the resolution? Senator Rogel, may close. Oh, Senator Talina Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this resolution. I agree with my colleagues that have spoken before me and in the consensus that this is going to impact not just Guam, but a greater area. And, and what really, it's, these actions that are being done by the NMFS is questionable because, like the previous speaker before me said, that they're not looking at federally owned properties here on Guam or federally occupied properties on Guam. They're also, they're looking at the entire island and its coastal line. And they did not, there was no attempt by the federal government to consult with these territories on how we would like to proceed or whether or not we agree with their findings. And there has been studies shown, there's been studies that have been, that have shown that the findings of the NMFS is inconclusive. And so it brings to question many things. It seems like now, not only are they, not only is the federal government occupying this area, but now they're trying to control the waters. And what was brought up in a letter from the Department of Agriculture that I'd like to read in for the record is something very critical here. Two things. The science behind the proposed rule is not the best available science. Since NMFS has not mapped or surveyed Guam's coastal waters in recent years to determine where coral colonies exist, it is necessary to test the DNA of coral to differentiate between the nearly 400 species present in Guam's water and tests have not been conducted. Some of the coastal sections waters identified do not fit NMFS's definitions of consolidated, hard substrate, free of sediment or algae, which NMFS suggests to be proposed critical habitat attributes that are essential for the conservation of the listed coral. Immediately, I think of Talofofo Bay as proposed site for a new boat ramp, but that will now face a new federal, a new layer of federal permitting bureaucracy that is absolutely not consolidated, hard substrate, free of sediment. It is the exact opposite of this. It is silty and soft. And so they're even targeting areas where there's no evidence of the whole purpose of NMFS trying to take the coastal shoreline. The designation will automatically result in a federal nexus for permitting. Governments in Guam, governments of Guam and private sector projects that require federal permitting in water and potentially even terrestrial projects will be impacted. Underwater fiber optic cables. Currently, federal permitting typically causes delays of months to sometimes years. What resources does NMFS have to deal with? An influx of hundreds to possibly thousands of new permits annually and biannually? So right now, at the legislature, we have, as a people, as, as the people of the island of Guam, we have this authority to allow permitting, to discuss this in open public about undersea cables and fiber optic cables that are coming into Guam. We have this authority to make this decision as a people. And with these types of movements by the federal government within federal agencies, they are stripping the people of Guam the authority to make choices for their own island. There are so many things I want to say on the record about this. We look to the United States government as, as an ally and sometimes like as a big brother. We serve in its militaries. We pledge allegiance to it every time we start session, every day we start school. And now they want to take away our authority as a people to decide what we know is best on this island. We want to make someone in a far-off land, perhaps in Washington DC, discern what is best for the people of Guam. That is not okay. The people of Guam should have the right and authority to decide what we want to do and what we know is best for our island, not some individual or some entity detached that does not live here, that was never raised here, that does not have family here, that does not have children here, not individuals that are detached from this island to discern what is better for the people of Guam. It's a huge disservice, especially when they are, they are trying to control something that within our culture is so valuable to us. As children, we play. We're taught how to fish. We're taught how to utilize the land to survive. We're taught that this is a part of our culture. We're taught to protect it. And all of this was done during COVID, and so last minute, and now we're just requesting for an extension. We should be telling them, heck, no. Why, and we should also be asking ourselves, why do they want control of our coastal line? What is their agenda? What are they bringing in? Why are they trying to control it? This is hegemony at its best. And that is not right. Especially in a democratic government, that we say the people's voice matter, to assert this kind of overreaching authority, to think that they have the authority to do it and to flex their muscle to do it. We're telling three other territories, we don't care what you think. We're already moving forward. And now these, now as an island of Guam, we have to request for an extension? This is a huge, huge... I hate to say it, it's an injustice. I mean, we use that word so often, but it's just not right. Especially for our culture, who is reliant on the land and the ocean. And now they want to control this piece too. They already have a third of the island's properties. What more do they want? Are they trying to enclose us? It's a disgrace.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Anyone else wishing to speak on the resolution? Resolution 46-36. If not, Senator Rogel's sponsor, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank my colleagues who spoke today in support of this resolution. I really appreciate the support. It is really just, you know, just asking that they wait until they complete the five-year coral status review, which they've said should be completed in February of 2022. That's less than a year. So all we're asking is that they wait less than a year's time, complete this study. Because in that study, they'll be able to identify a specific recovery plan for these 26 ESA or endangered species listed corals. And in that time, they can also determine whether or not, if we indeed have these corals that they're looking to protect on Guam. Otherwise, what they'll be doing with this critical coral habitat is just sort of blanketing, as my previous colleagues have attested to, all the civilian waters, leaving the military waters alone, blanketing all the civilian waters with this critical coral habitat designation without even knowing if that coral is in that habitat, that endangered coral is there. The testimony we received during the public hearing from the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, as well as from an individual from the marine lab at UOG, forgive me, his name escapes me, his testimony was basically that he's unsure if these corals are here. And that there's been some sightings of the corals that they think could be the coral, but because identification of species, especially when you're talking about corals in your underwater, it's not as simple as just looking at the coral and saying, yep, that's this type of species. Some of these species are so closely related, you really need to do genetic testing. And that's what hasn't been done yet to identify for sure if those corals exist here or not. So with that, I thank my colleagues who've spoken in support. And I'd like to make a motion to add Senator Frank Blas Jr. as a co-sponsor, Senator Talina Nelson as a co-sponsor, Senator Sabina Perez as a co-sponsor, Speaker Therese Terlali as a co-sponsor, Senator Telo Titigui as a co-sponsor. And then I'd like to make a motion, if that motion passes.
On the motion to add co-sponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I move to place the bill in the third reading file. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion to place Resolution Number 46-36 LS as amended by the author on the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Colleagues, we are going to, just a reminder that next week, in addition to our regular schedule, we are going to have state funeral on Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. We are going to have State of the Judiciary address Friday at 10:00 a.m. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Bill 86-36 COR. It's an act to amend Section 51A 106A2 of Chapter 51A for the purpose of adding co-sponsors.
All right. There's been a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill Number 86-36. On the motion to reconsider, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill Number 86-36 COR. Senator Perez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So I believe the amendment is sent. I'm not sure if it's in the Dropbox or in the folder. But I would like to add co-sponsors, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Titigui, and Senator Anthony Ada.
On the motion to add co-sponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That concludes my amendments. And I'd like to, sorry.
My apologies. Senator Perez, please proceed.
Yes, so that concludes my amendment. So if I can just put it in the third reading file.
Is there a motion to place the bill back on third reading file in the same place that it was previously in the third reading file, in the same order that it previously was in there?
Yes, please, I make the motion to keep the order that it was in.
All right. So on the motion to place Bill Number 86-36 COR back in the third reading file in the original location, the original order, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion for reconsider the actions of the body on Bill 48-36 with the second reading file to add co-sponsors, Madam Speaker, as I inadvertently.
On the motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill Number 48-36 COR as amended by the committee, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. Senator Ada, you are recognized on Bill Number 48.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I apologize to my colleagues as I unintentionally forgot to bring in the ones that we had from the public hearing onto the bill as co-sponsors. And I'd like to add as co-sponsors, Speaker Terlali, Vice Speaker Barnes, Senator Torres, and Senator Nelson to Bill 48-36 as additional co-sponsors, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, would those sponsors then be below the sponsors you added earlier?
Those will be above the, because they were at the public hearing, Madam Speaker, where we had mentioned them.
All right, just one sec. All right, Clerk Scott it. So on the motion to add co-sponsors, moved by Senator Ada, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to have the bill moved back down to the third reading to the same place that it was previously to bringing it back up.
On the motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on second reading. There are two additional items. Both of these items have been passed on file. So we will take them up on Monday. But again, just a reminder, we will be convening in the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, 10:00 a.m., for the state funeral for the late Speaker Joe Titano San Augustin. We are going to be convening in the Committee of the Whole on Friday at 10:00 a.m. for the State of the Judiciary. And we will continue to conduct business on all other days. So, Sisus Masi colleagues, and we'll convene, we'll see you again, or we will recess until Monday at 9:00 a.m. Sisus Masi.